It's seven o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call a meeting to order. If everybody at least can, and I'm going to ask that Chief Pointer lead us in prayer tonight.
Well, thank you so much for today. Thank you for all your lessons. We thank you for this time that you give us together as a city and conduct business. We ask you to be with the layers of our city and help them to listen to concerns, suggestions from citizens and make decisions based on their will. While we ask you to be with each one of us, help us to do this in a calm and pleasant way. While we ask you to continue to bless us while we love you and ask you to give us our sins in Jesus' name.
So, please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for all intents and purposes.
Roll call.
Larry Blasingame.
Here.
James McGee.
Here.
Evan Thacker.
Here.
Eddie Wakefield.
Here.
And I have Anson, Gary Perry, and Sandra Philpatrick.
Okay. We still have a form. Sandra was under the weather today, and Mr. Perry is off on his anniversary trip with his lovely wife. It was, I guess, a good reason for them to miss. All right, so let's begin with our minutes. We're going to start with the regular council meeting on February the 25th. Council members should have had a chance to look through that, and so if there's no questions, we entertain a motion to waive a reading of the minutes and adopt as is.
I want the motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Thacker. A second. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Motion carries. Also in your packet is the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 18th. And again, hopefully you've had a chance to look through these. And if there is no questions, then we will entertain a motion again to waive the reading and adopt as is.
I'm willing to accept the minutes.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the citizens' forum. We had first up was Thomas Barrett, and I believe Thomas is not here, right? I talked with him earlier today, and he said that he was not going to come tonight, but I will share with the council what he was talking about was the houseover on Maple Shade. We had a... Family members had started cleaning the property up and then had stopped, and so we have finally been able to get a hold of them. We did that last week. We gave them a notice, and I believe that notice is up tomorrow, and at which time they've been notified that they'll be cited if things aren't where they need to be and they're not closed. So my guess is going to be that there will be a citation given, and we'll continue to follow through our processes that we have to be able to make sure that we can get that property cleaned up. And so he was fine with that. That's what he was wanting to know was where we were with that. That will take care of Mr. Barrett. Next on the agenda is Wayne Beck.
This way you can kind of pause when I talk to your bound. Council members, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you as well. Appreciate your patience and indulgence in the doubt looking.
Some things I want to bring forward before the council. One is I want to talk about the mayor's salary for 2022 and how this is to the current $50,000 salary that we have. I'm requesting the council to consider lowering the salary in 2022 for the next election to approximately $30,000, which would be fairly appropriate, with the possibility there also with a merit bonus. This merit would be based on performance, where you set objectives and goals, and how the person met those objectives and goals and helped the city do it. This guaranteed $50,000 allowance that we have, the person doesn't even have to show up or be any expectations. So what I'm asking is consider that, that this be a merit-based type thing for what the performance is and how well the city performs. Okay, the next thing I have on here is how do we get the $50,000 for the current mayor's position? Or it's 2019, that was passed in June of 2019. Mr. Perry is not here, Mr. Wakefield was here at the time, and a few of the others. Evan were here at the time, and it was Larry. And at that time, Mr. Perry and Mr. Wakefield had known of that. Kind of setting straight, at the beginning of 2019, it was a very thin year as far as money goes. I believe the council, for the budget of 2019, the city attorney at that time was Mrs. Baker. She had a base salary, and that salary was around $40,000 a year. We also had a thing that the city attorney, the team, had received up to $18,000 a year for reimbursement for expenses. That was up to $1,500 a month. Okay, once we come in 2019, that was taken away, the reimbursement part, the $18,000 a year. The reason being is at that time, there was present to the council and the mayor saying that we just didn't have the money for it. During the middle of the year, of course, we passed this ordinance, which gave the salary from $25,000 to $50,000. So for a period of time, that's an extra $100,000. At the end of the year, which kind of surprises me, is we're able to give a $50,000 raise in the middle of the year, but at the end of the year, the people in general fund, the police officers who put their lives on line, the dispatchers, the parks personnel, the city planner officer, Mr. Beatty, and the staff over here, we didn't have the money to give any type of pay increase. The regulars pay scale was not given wide because we didn't have the money. So what I would like to do is I pass out to the council members, Act Number 1. Okay, I'd like to tell you, the money was very thin at that time. The very first part of there, I'm providing you some information that provided to Mayor back in March of that year, March 18th, to be precise, which you have here is the actual official email that I gave to the mayor. I had a thing there to, as convenient as possible in this realm there, watching the finances, and sometimes things got very alarmed, and things got critically low. So what I was doing for the mayor was providing information to him how we were doing, sometimes twice a week, sometimes it may be three or four times during the month. Sometimes it was in form of emails, sometimes it would just be going in there in a sheet that says, "This is where we are today." Okay, so on this particular one, let me try, this is on March 18th. You see on there is my email, and on the back of it is actual printout from Penta, which was the financial report. Okay, that printout shows that on the 18th, we had $75,000 in the bank. That's our cash month where we paid bills. There was an additional deposit, it's from March 1st to the 18th, of $20,000, which gave us about $104,000. Unfortunately, at that time, we still needed to pay the street fund, about $34,000, and we owe the fire department, because the yearly thing that we have to pay you in there, the 50, about $53,000, that's $80,000. Well, also, March 25th, we would have had municipal insurance, payroll, taxes and stuff, that would have been anywhere from maybe $100,000 depending on how much in the salaries were at that particular time. Unfortunately, that did not give us any money to pay back to the street department and the fire department. And without, otherwise, we would have been in the red. All right, when I presented this to the mayor, and you also see some spreadsheets that I gave that projected out what would have costed all the way through July at that time.
Wayne, I'm going to have to ask you to draw this to a close if you would.
Then why is that, sir?
Do the procedural act, both the council could allow more time if you wanted to.
Council members, I am asking you to allow me to finish continuing on this. If there's a point that needs to be brought out.
I'll make a motion if we let Mr. Beck continue.
Let's hope within reason, though.
I'll try to keep this within.
Yeah, can we?
And if I get called back to five, I'll come back next year.
If it goes off, would you be interested in just being on the agenda to speak outside of the session for?
Yeah. Let me finish this, okay? So at that time, sir, I'm going to, at the time the mayor, when I approached him, told him that this needed to go out to council members, the mayor got that said, "It may as well." Okay, I told him that he was going to leave, so where I was. At that time, the mayor and I did agree that he'd send out this information to every time. Okay, March 18th. Once again, we'll just finish up with that. Now, cash the mirrors of message where he sent it out to you, this particular one. This, this thing go to March 25th. Shows right there, our cash balance at that time, $6,400 in our cash account. We also received $66,000 in deposits, which gave us $73,000. If you notice right there, it says, "Jerry, critical load. We still owe the fire department and the street department." That would have been about $80,000. Once again, not enough to pay the bills. The next one, April 12th. So the cash account balance for that was $46,000. We made a deposit, $55,000, gave us about $102,000. We still owe the fire department $53,000. We still owe the street department $29,000. Okay, the next payroll was on April the 20th, so that municipal insurance would have been about $85,000. That's April, had 20 days remaining to pay bills. Okay, 20 days, and you see what our balance was at that time, $46,000, and then plus with the deposits. Once again, we didn't have the money to pay the fire department where we are then, or the street department. April 23rd, the income sheet's right there for you. This is not made up, though. These are printed out sheets right out of our income. There's nothing there. I'm not making up some of the sheets. This came out of the finances out of this office. Okay, cash account account minus 7 available, about $37,000. We still owe the fire department $53,000. We still owe the street department. On this evening, I say, please inform Destiny when you decide to make this payment in the future. The next one, May 16th. This is right before y'all voted in the pay raises. They gave us $54,000 up to that point. They gave us a balance of $98,000. On 5/20, we had to have payroll, taxes retired, say $50-something thousand. Balance after that payroll stuff would have been about $40,000. Okay, we still owe the fire department $50-something thousand and the street department. Okay. In summary on this stuff, this stuff here, does the mayor hide from counsel, finding a summary report and updates? Did he lie to the council about finding money? He went to the council member, summoned you to your places of employment, and said that money was found. Okay, later on, Destiny was asked in a meeting at the committee vote, "Did you find money?" She stated, "No." Okay, did his actions harm 2500 general fund employees at the end of the year if he did not get pay raises? Right there, I showed you something with a basic salary of a police officer. This is bad fighting for his life out there. Basic stage started 37.5, the next year says he didn't raise 37.5. You can see the difference over the four-year period of time, that he lost $6,100, but yet the benefit of the mayor was an extra $100,000 over four years. So where that money was found, I have no idea. It wasn't in the fund, you can see it here. Destiny said she didn't find it. If it is available, this council has the ability to investigate, it should be readily available, and the finance reports out there if you need to do it for. Now, remember, don't wait money from the city attorneys. We didn't have money, middle of the year, bingo, an extra $25,000, which is up being $100,000. And at the end of there, about 25 employees didn't get any money for the pay raises. That hurt their payments. That was money off of their pay. That's money off of clothes. Okay, that's all I have to say about that final part. My next thing is about the police reports. I'm not falling in depth about this, but the mayor has stated that I have done nothing wrong, and I haven't been charged. No charges, no nothing. But I have a couple of questions for the police chief over here, please. And I'm sorry to put you on stop, but Mr. Warner. On 10/24, officer goes out to domestic court. What it was about, we don't care about that. That's their private stuff. But what I did have a question about is when got there, Mr. Jordan, he said that the mayor had put his hands on his mug. Mrs. Martin advised that the mayor, who was very angry, grabbed her by the hand and squeezed her very hard. Mrs. Martin stated it felt like he was shooting right in his finger. The officer answered, "She wanted to pursue charges." Mrs. Martin had just said it this time. My question is, let's just put this to rest. He says he hasn't been charged, he hasn't done anything wrong. Was the reason why he was charged because it was nothing there to be charged with, or because she didn't pursue charges? And would this would have been considered, okay, assault and battery?
Well, obviously, I wasn't there, and I didn't want to report, and so I trust the judgment of the officer, and I feel like if arrests needed to be made at that time, that arrest would have been made. I do, I do think that Mr. Engen had, or Miss Martin had the option of pursuing those charges with the prosecutor.
Was based on what that officer's report was, and the harm that was done to her?
Wayne, you need to go ahead and come to a close.
Okay, I've only got a couple of reports, council on that one. I'll wrap this up within a few minutes, just a few more reports. Okay, the next one was a GPS vehicle thing.
Wayne?
I said.
We're done.
Council members, may I have just three more minutes?
I would watch you finish what he has to say, and then we'll.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish this if you don't mind.
Okay, and so before he does move, while we're talking on that subject, will you explain why the county and the state was there also to assist? What's the reason behind that?
That's a procedure. I mean, for any, really any city employee, I mean, if we're dispatched to call, obviously we don't, being the boss of the city employees, obviously if there's actually need to be taken, then they would have stepped in and took possession.
Right, so that our police officer's not put in a bad spot, right? So had there been anything there, I would have been arrested.
Again, I wasn't there.
But, I mean, that's the reason why they got the credit.
Sir, grabbing somebody's hand, can I go to a mark? Grab somebody's hand and then squeeze it and yell at them and be charged with assault and battery if they wish to pursue charges? If they wanted to pursue charges, would the officer have to pursue charges?
When you talk about assault and battery and domestic battery, that's two different charges.
That's fine, I just wanted to get a clear line. Okay, GPS on the vehicle, all right? And the time that the mayor has asked these other people that have liked my topic, stated for that because it's in my three minutes, please. The GPS, can I place the GPS on anybody's vehicle without being a violation of assault? Without their permission, sir?
Well, honestly, I'd rather not comment on that because at that time.
All right, that's fine.
It was determined.
And then the third one, here. The third one's where the officer, where Miss Jacob came there and said that they wanted to report right here about the mayor harassing them, saying that the mayor had sent out a tweet or text or something to personally, special needs person, to get a picture of her truck. On 1/27, it was known the mayor's known us all and then throughout the county. Miss Jacob stated that she'd seen the mayor walking through the neighborhood and attending the neighborhood night. Now, to me, that sounds suspicious, but that's just my personal thing. But the officers explained to the people at that time how to pursue a warrant. This right here, under harassment, which is Arkansas statute 557, that's 208, okay? Problem's about harassment, because this has actually been harassment, if they wanted to pursue a warrant, following somebody around.
That wouldn't have been my decision, that wouldn't have been prosecuted.
Okay, so once again, we have no real answers then. Okay, that would be up to your time. Okay, so here's my questions for you guys. I've got into that part. The city council has held a lot of these things in, okay, first of all, the Alamo mayor's position is an important position of leadership. He has about 50 employees. He must lead by example. He should work in the best interest of the city. I've heard, I have heard times from northwest people in northwest Arkansas, or something surrounding years, they've seen him there in TV, the papers, the YouTube, they're talking about the naked impact of our mayor on our county. The citizens have not heard from our council members about how they feel about these events that occurred. Everything has been an executive decision. Some people, they ask me, "Well, how come they aren't doing anything?" So when an executive decision, you don't know what has been done, what has been said to the mayor. Okay, when we vote for our leaders, we use them based on their performance, also based on how they handle things, even in tough situations. Our council can't be decided. You must be for our citizens. My question for each one of you council members. Number one, has our mayor performed his duties that reflects that he is a man of integrity and good morals? Has he been a positive role model for the citizens and employees? And number, the last thing is, do you think he should consider resigning? So we haven't heard from you as council members, and I want time to like you. Mr. McGee, would you, do you think that the mayor has that positive role model for these, or do you think that these proportions of his bad negativity has reflected bad on the city, or been a problem for the city?
Well, Wayne, we've discussed this with him.
Okay, that's fine, all right. And if you don't want to person, Mr. Thacker, do you feel that this has been a person, a man of integrity, good morals, that has been a positive role, and do you think he should consider resigning?
No, I don't think that this has been the example that we need set by our mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Blasingame, same thing.
You know, I believe that we should hold the folks either elected, you know, positions, or even just the regular citizens inside Alamo to a higher caliber, right? Because we all went out, and most of us did at least, and even the folks that have moved in, we do hold ourselves to a higher caliber because of our hometown values. So, you know, I believe that there's been some opportunities for improvement, sure, but, you know, I'm not going to comment on, you know, anything else.
That's fine. Mr. Wakefield, sorry for your position, sir. Do you think this is going to be very bad? Do you think that's a spin?
Since I'm on the council, all personnel matters is always in discussion executive session. You know well, anybody out here, that things that are discussed in the executive session are not for public. Am I happy about everything that's happened over the past few months? No. We've expressed our concerns, hopefully we've gotten a lot of advice.
The citizens have mentioned that they're not hearing from the council members, and I did tell them, "In the executive session, you're not going to hear things." But I did tell them that you all take care of your action, you express your concern. I want to thank each of you all for your time tonight. There is one other thing that I did want to say. When I came up here and tried to talk, I was trying to be silent, trying to avoid, trying to be anyway. Never mind, continue here at the city, but one person, the mayor told all three of us that were working in office at that time that we were not allowed to talk to the city attorney, the department heads, or city council, without being, without being threatened, but being fired. Okay, and Mr. Pointer, I'd be glad to take a polygraph on anything I just said in here tonight. Okay? Thank you all, folks, for your time. Appreciate the council for your time, and I apologize, but these are questions that people are asking. I could be answering them there. I appreciate you.
Next up, Jim.
I'm going to let Amy talk first, and we're both going to Jim at the same time, but I won't buy a lot of time. I hope the council will give me plenty of time.
You're fine. You're fine.
I think Wayne said it very clearly tonight, that there are a lot of issues going on. He used a word that Jim and I are here to discuss tonight, and that's the word harassment, because we have been harassed over and over again with a project that Jim and I are doing. First of all, when you say Jim and Amy White in this aspect, we are not residents of the city. We have a business in the city, and we are building onto it. So when you say Crawford County Storage, you are speaking Jim and Amy White. We are equal partners in that. The way I see it, the mayor run is to run the city properly, a question whether it's being done. The council has six members who enact the ordinances and the resolutions, and also it is their responsibility, they are in control of all the finances. So all that went through you, so maybe you want an audit. The city clerk is the record keeper. She has the custody of the law and the ordinances. So when someone calls the city clerk for an ordinance, she should not have to go to the city attorney to get it. Do you agree with me or not, council members? She is the law keeper. She's the one that keeps that. So why was she, or why did she put someone off, saying she had to go to the city clerk, or to the city attorney? The city attorney is only the legal counsel to the mayor, to the council and to the clerk. He's just a legal counsel to him. He's not the golfer boy for him. The department heads are all appointed by the mayor, but he can fire them. But I also remind you, council members, that the council can override his act with a two-thirds vote. So with six of you council members, four of you can throw that out anytime, because some of them have been threatened in the past. Mayor, I have some questions I want you to answer tonight.
Okay.
First of all, simple question, because I've been reading through things. It states that you are the head of the parks department. You appoint the heads of the parks department. Why did you point yourself the head and not someone else?
No, I didn't appoint myself the head. It's just always fallen under that, in that position.
What is it that's indefinitely?
Okay, so the parks, the head of the parks has all, it's just fallen under the mayor's position for a good number of years now. So that's the way it was. We, at one point, the council had moved it over to the city planner, and then it came back over to the mayor's office.
Okay, that answers that question I have. Second of all, I have a flash drive. You're probably aware of the flash drive. The flash drive was made from our office in October of 2020. We have all these cameras and everything at Crawford County Storage. This flash drive, on this flash drive, you drove onto our property at 11:00 at night, got out of your truck, walked to the back of your truck, it's all very clear, then walked back into your truck, closed the door, and you headed west off our parking lot. That would be toward Honeysuckle. And heading west, you went across our property there, where we are building four new climate-controlled units.
That's correct.
It was under construction at the time. We wondered what in the world someone was doing on our construction site at that time of night. However, when we went along through the cameras, we saw when you came back. You came back at 4:00 in the morning. You came back from the east side of our property. You got in your truck and you drove off. The only way that you could have come back through the east side of our property, through the U-Haul parking lot, was if you had gone across the back of our property where construction was going on then. What were you doing at Crawford County Storage on our property for five hours, when our tenants are not allowed on that property from 10:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning, but the mayor was seen during that time? What were you doing?
So I wasn't on your property for five hours. I had went into the neighborhood to my resident that lives down there. I was at their house for, I don't know how long I was there, but I was at their house. And then when I left, I left in a manner to try to avoid a confrontation, and so that was, that was it. That's why you saw me coming back from the other direction. Again, that has nothing to do with anything other than what is going on with a divorce and a private matter that I am not going to play out in public. This is not the place.
I don't want to hear about a private matter at all. I'm not interested in your divorce or anything like that. But I say, council members, you see, the conduct of this mayor is not up to par, and things have been missing from the back of our property where there was, where there has been construction at times, and you made yourself quite open to that. I'm sorry.
Hi, Jim.
Council members, first of all, I want to thank you for the job you're doing. If you're out here, you're better than Alamo, or you wouldn't be here. I mean, you're done, you're done taking time out, and you're... I mean, you're done, you're done taking time out of your daily lives to come here and serve. And you're not getting compensated that much for it, so, you know, you're doing it for the betterment of Alamo. I realize that. Second of all, I hope you guys know me. I've gone to church with two of y'all for twenty-five years. But I want y'all to give me time here and not let the mayor cut me out. Ashan, okay? Give me and I a lot of time, because Amy and I go over to speak here. Members of the office here, I don't know if y'all know me enough, I'm Jim White. Let me tell you something about myself. I rode into this town, drove in this town in a borrowed car, no money, no job, and didn't know a soul here, and no relatives. And I've been blessed, I'm truly blessed. That's the reason I am so proud to be living in the Alamo area and have a business here. Okay? Not many people have been as blessed as I have been. And this has been people like you, this blessing, utilizing our businesses over the years. I've been accused of violating all kinds of ordinances on, on this construction job. Through the mayor. And through the mayor, he's using Sean Brewster here, like Amy said, as a golfer guy, or henchman, to accuse, threaten, intimidate anybody that he almost intimidated. Of course, I think all of y'all know, Sean Brewster, you weren't, you weren't elected your job, were you?
That's correct.
No, you were not elected, you were hired.
I'm agreeing, yes, sir.
You were hired, okay? That means American Fire, you can't. That's what, tell me, can America fire you?
It's contracted, but.
Absolutely, American Fire you. So you're beholden to the mayor.
That's not really correct.
Okay, but, the mayor has the right to fire you.
No, he's under contract, and the only, and the only way that contract could be voided would be by the council.
Okay? Okay? I want to get this out in the open. Mr. Brewster, you're being paid forty-eight thousand dollars a year for this town. You do legal counsel, aren't you?
That's correct.
Forty-eight thousand dollars a year. Well, I look down here and I say, you are the attorney for Dyer, Mountainburg, Cedarville, Rudy. What do they pay you? Are they paying you forty-eight thousand dollars a year also?
No, sir.
Wow, you must be drawing a heck of a big salary. And what about Mulberry, you're prosecuting attorney there, aren't you?
Yes.
Is all this a conflict of interest? I think it is. What do you guys think? What do you council members think? This guy has drawn salaries in every town in the county, plus, plus you the attorney from Mulberry. And drawn forty-eight thousand dollars a year, now I'm on here, wow. Now, what bothers me, the mayor is using you to call and intimidate people. I was Peewee Parsons, I can't even talk to Peewee Parsons. Peewee said, Jim, I've been banned by the mayor for calling you. Is that true, mayor?
Absolutely.
Come on, that's, tell me, is that yes or no?
No.
That's not true. You're, you're, you're screaming at Peewee Parsons, telling him that you did not ban him from calling.
Yes, if, if that's, if that's what he said to you.
Put it on record.
Yes.
Okay, Mark Yardley, where are you at? You know, this job's been going on since June of last year. And it's going to last until I pass June this year. I called you several times, and you have never returned my call. Has he been banned also?
No, sir.
He's not returning my calls. What's the problem, Mark Yardley?
I'm not sure.
I don't know, I don't know what's wrong with this. I'm running a construction job here, and you won't return my calls. Now, they say we got a new city planner. Who is he? If he's in the office, stand up, I'd like to meet you.
That's me.
What's your name?
Cody Shines.
How come you haven't been out to meet people on these construction jobs? Me?
This was a hot topic, obviously, when I came down.
What about the other builders? I don't think anybody in town's met you. I've been told that you're, that you sat in your basement with the door locked. All you do is flip papers about city zoning. Why aren't you out here meeting and greeting these people?
I'm trying to update the zoning map that hasn't been.
You didn't do your job. I tell you what, I think y'all can see, we've got some problems in this town. I'm going to give you a forensics. I went to the post office last Thursday. Mr. Brewster knows all about this. Picked up the mail, and I was getting, as it sent in your truck, getting ready to leave, he comes up, knocks on my door. The window, my car, a truck, and I roll down, I said, what do you need, Sean? He said, we're having a meeting about you today. A meeting about me? I wasn't notified. Who was the meeting with? You and the mayor, and maybe the city planner over here? Who was the meeting with? I don't know.
Well, since I had the pleasure of talking to you at the post office, I didn't actually have to have that meeting. You and I got it taken care of. You've answered my question, and that resolved the matter.
But you asked me about how much masonry I was going to put on this, on these buildings on this.
That's correct.
What concern was that of yours? If you're not the building inspector?
No, they charged me with enforcing the ordinances, and that question had come up about a variance request.
But these plans were approved by the planning commission.
Yes, sir.
This is fact, that was on the planning commission at the time.
Hang on, Jim, now, you're going to accuse me of something. I asked you how much masonry you were going to put if it was going to match the drawing that you submitted your variance request. You said yes. I said, you said actually you're going to go a block higher? And that essentially resolved that issue. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not following why you're so upset with me.
Okay, that's something you brought up.
Okay, and I want to stop something right, right now.
Go ahead, that's serious.
The, the personal attacks are, are, need to stop here. And, and so.
There's no personal pack, what I'm speaking is honest.
Hang on.
Wait a minute, there's no personal pack. Mayor, I've got the floor right now, what I said is, is true.
You, okay.
There is no personal pack.
No, Jim, it, it, the truth is, is that somebody from the planning commission came to, I think Cody originally, and said, I think we've got a problem. I don't know that he's setting, that, something about the, the foundation. Anyway, it didn't look like you were going to be preparing it for the facade, or for the bricks, okay? So that's where the question came from, no, hang on, hang on.
Let's talk about that, let's talk about that.
No, because that's not the issue, I'm trying to tell you where we are, Jim, Jim, listen.
That's Peewee Parsons' job, and Peewee, that's his job.
Okay. Listen, you're right, and you and I.
And you banned Peewee Parsons, didn't you?
And, no, I did not. And you, you and I had a conversation about the concrete apron back there. And you told me, you didn't believe that it was your responsibility to put that apron in because of the easement or something to do with the city. And I said, okay, and when we finished that conversation, I told you, let me check on that and see where it is, because I'm not going to argue about something I don't know. In that process of checking on that, is when I found out that there was a question about the masonry, and there was something else involved in there also. And so the only thing that I said in this whole process in there, because we had three different things going here, was I didn't want anyone, I, I didn't want Peewee going to you and saying, you've got to do this, or, or Mark, or Cody, or me, or anybody else.
You had to worry about Mark, I hadn't hurt him here.
Until we had worked through this and we knew what we were saying. I didn't want someone to say something to you out of place, or that wasn't true. That's all that was. Nobody said they couldn't talk to you, or any one person couldn't talk to you.
It's on my Peewee's.
Well, but then, then, I, I don't know what he told you. And if that's really what he told you, then he surely misunderstood what was said, because I didn't speak to Peewee personally anyway.
I would trust Peewee Parsons with what you say, anytime.
And that's fine, you can do that.
Listen, now, you accused me, and Sean said, I was in violation of, of this ordinance ninety-nine point, that's five. Finished the paving, and I was sitting straight to, to your property, to your property line, right? Now, Sean, am I, am I in violation of that ordinance or not?
No, what I told you was, that, that issue's been brought to me, they, they asked me to look at the, the ordinance, and then I needed to drive down to Tulip, I believe. I told you I hadn't even looked at that yet, when I talked to you.
The mayor already told me, called and told me I was in violation of it. And I said, well, if I'm in violation, what about the other five exits out of country metal states? Are all those folks in violation too? I tell you what, I'm in a rassle on this job. Enough. I want, I want the council to do something about it, put a stop to it. Let me tell you what, I don't know if y'all realize, now, this is the only construct, commercial construction job taking place in Alamo. Isn't that amazing? This started last year, and this is the only construction, commercials, construction project in Alamo. And this is an expensive job. For Alamo, it's a big, big job. And when I get this thing completed, this will be the biggest, one of the biggest, very biggest facilities in the state of Arkansas. Now, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to accommodate people coming in here. We have got a population shift in this country right now. People coming in from all over. And they're running from me. And I'm trying to accommodate. Let me tell you something else. All these people that's on my construction side, they're bringing in a lot of tax dollars to city Alamo, which we need. Now, the problem we got in this town, the problem we got in this town, we have, we have no infrastructure where, where developers can afford to come in and develop. So we're running out of lots in this town. We've got a few scattered lots here and there, where builders are building on. There is nothing for sale in Alamo property, personally. So all these people coming in, that's running, running from me, they're saying, well, we're buying pieces of land out here outside, they're not, so they're not coming into Alamo proper. That they're coming in and buying pieces of land and building, or buying something else, you know? Home, well, homes on the outside city, because there's nothing in Alamo. But I want to stop with this stuff. You harassed me from day one. Right on the start, you accused me of being on somebody else's property line. Remember, remember that?
Didn't accuse you, no?
Yes, you did. You sent Peewee down, and Peewee took pictures of the survey site. Done the Saturdayville survey. Most reputable survey company in this whole area. Absolutely. Took pictures of the survey stuff, went back to you, and you, and Peewee said, you told him, said, well, who's to say the survey's right? I can't believe you, mayor. I'm believing, that was just almost day one when I started this project.
Okay. We had a resident that was complaining, and so I asked Peewee to check on it. You, you are correct there, absolutely.
But why were you, why were you, um, why did you say that, how you know the survey's right? When you got a reputable survey company that did, surveyed it?
I, I don't recall that conversation. So, I, I don't, again, I, I'm not going to try to defend something that, that I wasn't a part of. I don't know what he said. But, but I will tell you that he did. We had a complaint from two residents in that neighborhood. And so I asked Peewee to go check it and to see where we were. And I believe Mark Yardley was involved in that conversation, were you not, Mark, at one point? Did, do you remember?
I honestly don't recall.
Okay, so, yeah, but, but, yeah, so I did ask Peewee to go check it, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, Mr. Brewster, I have been, have not been in violation of any ordinance, any ordinance. You're the first ordinance you said, you camp behind your trucks off of Tulip Street on your property. Hey, you can read the ordinance, I've got it right here, it, it plainly says, construction is exempt. But you, I had read the ordinance when you told me that.
Well, and I, and I'll tell you the other fact that I didn't know was, the way you have the property titled. I believe that you had it titled the same all the way across, and I believe we could have required you to enter and exit on sixty-four, but because you have it in two different entities, I believe that you're correct, and that I couldn't hold you to a violation, once I'd learned that.
According to this, it does not pertain, pertain to construction.
No, no, let me, no, let me finish. If you're going to call me out on carpet, let me tell you, if, if you had that whole strip as one legal entity, I believe we could have made you enter and exit from sixty-four, and I'll stand by that. But because you have it in two pieces, I agree that we went, we could have enforced.
I know there's degrees in agriculture, not legal matters. That's pretty funny. You better get off my case, I'm, I'm sick of it. And mayor, don't use him as your henchman, intimidate, intimidate me, I'm not going to fuck with it. But anyway, I've got the ordinance right here, I was not in violation. And you said, well, the police was on their ticket, and each driver was coming here. Sure enough, the first thing, here comes Officer Mayhem, which is a nice guy. He lives on, on, on Honeystoke, he backs up to this property. But I guess you were calling shots on who took it, who not to take it, and everything like that. Because, sure enough, here he came and, and.
I believe there are tickets.
Concrete truck banged on, on the door and asked the driver to get out. Driver was physically shaken, because he thought he was going, he might lose his, his CDO license. Well, man, I got calls from mid-continent, like, hey, they had six trucks landed. We, we, we can't come in there anymore, Jim, we can't come in there. They're going to ticket us, our drivers will lose their license. So you were, are you calling the shots, or the mayor calling the shots at this town?
I think you conveniently forgot that I told you you could pour concrete.
Yeah.
And you and I had an agreement where you could run concrete trucks.
Yeah, but, but, but I was, I was in violation to begin with. I didn't know it, I took it at your word. You said it was, so I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have the ordinance at the time. And later, after, as the concrete was poured, I, I poured it and finished it up. I got the copy of the ordinance and realized I wasn't in violation anyway. Okay, now think, you called my, my dirt contractor and threatened him that people hit, one of his trucks out or any more through that, through that street, remember that?
I did, I left there, yes.
Why, why did you do that?
Because that was still at the time when I believed you were in violation, if you could have been.
Well, this was, wait a minute, Sean, this was a month later.
No, this was.
Did it take you a month to find out we wasn't in violation?
He was the first contractor, if you remember, this was the very beginning when everybody was complaining about.
No, this was at least a month later, a month later. Oh, this is all beside the point, but look, I'm, I'm just, I want the council to put a stop to this. I'm, I'm tired of it. You know, when you've got the only commercial construction job in town, and, and somebody's nitpicking you and harassing you every time you turn around, enough's enough. Enough's enough. This town needs to grow, we need, we need construction. I don't know what the city planner's doing, but you ought to be calling trying to bring business into this town. With six thousand less population, we don't need to spend years studying more zoning. We need to bring people, we need to bring businesses in, into this town.
We're updating the zoning map that hasn't been.
If I were you, I'd get out, I'd, I'd meet and greet these people all up town, too. They would know me if I was a new city planner in town. I wouldn't be hiding down the basement like that. I appreciate y'all giving me time, sweetie. I had to get this off my chest. And I, I hope that you don't use him anymore to try to intimidate me, harass me, or threaten me, okay? Have I got an answer on you, mayor?
What, absolutely. Because I haven't to this point, I've never once told him or asked him to do anything.
He's beholden to it, he knows that he may be under contract, but you, you can get rid of him. And it's not the city planner, he's, he's not an elected official, you could fire him.
You know, I, I have to tuck.
You've got these people all calmed down, who are afraid to do it.
Yeah, you know, I tuckle with that, because you're, you're giving me way too much credit for that.
You're a terrible mayor.
And, and that may be true, but, but you, you are giving me way too much credit, okay? I, I can promise you that there's not.
Giving you credit for being a good mayor, no, I don't think so.
No, no, and that's not what I said. You know, there's not any department head that is, that is fearful of their job. I can assure you that Mr. Brewster is not fearful of his job. Mr. Brewster has never been asked to harass or, or do anything.
Get off my case, Brewster, don't call me anymore. That's, that's, that's a fact, that is the building inspectors that needs to be calling me to check this stuff out.
You're hitting on Mr. Yardley.
You're not, you're not qualified, I call him twice. Who's masonry put on these buildings?
They asked me, they asked me to interpret the ordinance, I happened to run into you at the post office. Hell, I resolved the matter. I'm, I don't, I failed to see how, why you're so upset, because that was sad stuff, and no issue was going to come with it.
Are you calmed down with the mayor, too?
But you, I called you twice over the last couple days, and you didn't return my calls, so I, I.
No, so I want to meet you face to face right here tonight, brother, right, right on this table here.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to call this, this, this is going to come to an end. We, we, uh, when we start talking about the, the street and the apron, again, I want to make sure that we're clear with this, is that that whole conversation started because of a resident in that area that was concerned about what was getting tracked off of your property and into the street. And that's why it even got looked at to begin with. Mark Yardley and I had a conversation about that, correct, Mark? Talking about the apron, the concrete apron? And so, that's when I talked to you, and, and we had our discussion. You said what you did, I told you, I said, I, I don't know. So I asked Mark again, and Mr. Brewster for some clarification on there. So that whatever we did, I wanted to make sure that it was right moving forward. That's all that was. And that whole conversation started because of a complaint from a resident in that neighborhood.
Why didn't you read the ordinance before you even?
I did read the ordinance, I did read the ordinance. But I also rely on my department heads to do their job, because they are much more. Mark is much more knowledgeable about streets and infrastructure than I am. And he's much more knowledgeable about an ordinance and interpreting, because, you know, sometimes, some of these ordinances, and especially, you know, we, we've talked. You know, we, we've talked about this, you know, over and over again. That some of these ordinances start getting picked to death and what seems to be sometimes common sense, others don't see it the same way. And so, that's where Mr. Brister's involvement came in this, as he should have been because he's our city attorney. And we want to make sure that whatever we're telling you or telling anybody else when it comes to something like this is sound. Simple as that. We're, we're doing exactly what we should be doing when it comes to a matter like this. Mr. Brister thought.
Simple person could read this ordinance and figure it out.
And, and that is correct.
A very simple person can read.
And I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Mr. Brister, but I, 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 my belief here is, in the conversations that we've had, that he felt because he had a relationship with you enough that he could discuss something with you and, and it, and it just be taken care of, as he has said several times tonight, that he had a conversation with you at the, at the post office and it was handled.
But I talked to you earlier about this same thing. And you said, well, since you have a business.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did. Am I lying again, Mayor?
No.
Wow.
No.
Wow.
That's, that's not what I said. I said.
What do you all think about, what do you think about, Wayne?
So, we're. And what did, uh, you wanted to respond to Mrs. White?
Again, I have two comments, no questions.
Go ahead.
The lady in the front row, I don't know that you're aware of this, but your camera light is shining right in my eye. And it's something that.
There's a light there, I'm sorry.
Thank you, it is something that can cause me to have a seizure. So, thank you for that. Um. In response to Mrs. White, your husband and I had a very pleasant conversation, I believe it was just.
Yeah, there was no anticipation that, that you didn't. I have no anticipation of that whatsoever.
And, and so, I'm a new city clerk. I don't know all the ordinances. I knew that some, there had been some discussion, um, with Mr. White since I've been here about what's going on out there. And I, all I said was, I don't have to get these from him. What I did say is, would you mind, would it be all right with you if I contacted to make sure? Because I'm not sure that I'm pulling the exact ordinances that you were looking for. And so, I did call, you actually said that was a very good idea. I checked with Cody as well to make sure that I was providing you with this, the, the ordinances that you were looking for.
Sean, I appreciate it. You gave me the ordinances. You were very pleasant with them, and I appreciate that. I have no problem either by this city, other than the mayor. Other than the mayor. I do have a problem with you, brother. That's all I have to say, I just hope this stops. What do you think about this, McGee?
Well, I tell you what, there's a lot of stuff that has been brought out that we've been approached by, by, by what you're doing out there that we haven't seen. We had the committee, all, all that paperwork, make sure we come out there and complain about you, but we.
And several sitting in here tonight.
And, and some, that's right, several of them are sitting right here. I got calls at home. But everything you was doing is right.
Right. But he fixed the problem.
But we had a lot of people that was complaining about it.
There were some that weren't complaining.
I got letters from some of that there who say, hey, I'm no part of this. We, we like what you're doing too.
And that, you are, you are correct with that too?
I had actual letters.
I'm just telling you though, it's a lot of, of talk been going on. And we, everything we've looked at, everything, you're in good shape as far as we're concerned.
Like my wife said, when she came before this, uh, council before, you know, a construction job, it, it's going to be a nuisance. But, but it's necessary if we're going to have broken town in this sound room, this town. But, uh, at any rate, uh, I want to apologize and be a little bit upset. I can get real upset. I'm just a little upset tonight, Mayor. I want to apologize, but I do thank a lot of everybody on the council. Like I say, you're, America, I've gone to church with you guys for 25 years and know all of you. I've been, I've served on plenty of commission myself. And I'm, I'm just blessed to live in this town. I'm just looking out for the veteran of town in this city and I know you all are, you've been serving here. So, I'm just saying.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Next up for us, Mayor? Floor is yours.
Okay, I'm not going to gripe at you guys, I'm just going to say that if you would like to have a COVID vaccine shot, we are only giving Moderna now. But you can call the Coleman Pharmacy and, uh, we'll get you, we'll get you an appointment and you can come. And we're doing, uh, the clinics on Friday. And so, you can come. And we're also, for some of you parents and everything, if your child is 16 or older, uh, we're going to do a clinic at the high school. And we're going to be giving, uh, the high school students that want one, a COVID shot. We'll be giving the Pfizer vaccine because they're eligible for 16 and older. And so, if you've got one that is 16 and 17, they need permission slips from you for us to give them a, a COVID shot. That's it.
And, and those are still taking place over at Grace Church, correct?
Yes, our, we're doing, uh, tomorrow, we're doing a clinic with, um, about 560 people getting their COVID shot. So, there's a demand and everything, but I'm, I'm happy that we're trying to do this to that. And so, if you have a student or no one or anything and they want a COVID shot, just, uh, they have to have a permission slip if they're only 16 and 17, but 18 year olds again.
Okay. Call Coleman and the location is Grace Church. Uh, and, and then Johnny Fisher. Floor is yours.
What's left of it? Um, I'd like to tell everyone that I own Alma, which was Allen Canyon Facility, which is 130,000 square feet, twelve and a half acres. I own multiple businesses in Fort Smith. I own multiple businesses in Fayetteville and Oklahoma City. And I understand frustrations, but is there not a time limit on this thing where two people get to take an hour? Is there a time limit or is this just bully yourself up here and don't sit down? Because I got to ask that, because man, this is looking like a Jared Springer top to back. I've been to two of these. Is this the way it is every time? Holy moly. Because I came here to say.
We do have a time limit.
They, they. Well, we're not looking at it.
I know, the mayor has been concerned with people speaking and not.
Okay, well, that sure doesn't give much time for anyone else.
I know. I agree.
Get on with your conversation.
Get on with my conversation, you've taken 45 minutes? You've got to be kidding. So, anyway, I would like to say to all the department heads that I thank you for the attention to my business. Yeah, we've had problems and we've had, um, solutions. And it hasn't always worked out the way I wanted it to be, but, uh, I thank you. I'm glad to be a part of this city. I'm glad that what's going on in this city, we put a lot of money into my facility. Try to make it look nicer, try to make, but man, could you please stop? While someone's speaking, it's rude, please. We gave you the time, so please give us the time. So, anyway, uh, thank you. Thank you to all the city officials and to all the department heads. Um, second of all, um, I'm very involved with Steel Horse Rally in Fort Smith, Arkansas. Uh, this is my sixth year with them. I'll, I perform on the stage and I'm the producer of all the music for Steel Horse Rally. Dennis Stowe came to our downtown, was blown away about what has happened. And what a great job has been done with the downtown area. And rather than just letting it fall in on itself, what, what has happened? And he has shown an interest into bringing some sort of a bike rally to Alma. Now, I got to tell you, as a former owner of the sound room in Fort Smith, Arkansas, which is now the majestic, I own the property, I owned both buildings there. In one weekend, I would make enough money to cover my payments for the entire year from just Steel Horse Rally. So, it not only is a incredible event for families, they've done a fantastic job of making sure that families are welcome, that things are done in a, in a great timely manner. So, uh, he is expressive interest. So, that's going to be coming before the council members at some point in time. Um, that's something he would like to do for the city, so I'd like to say that first and foremost. And I got to say that it palls me to watch people personally insult folks. This is not how you grow a city. This is like Mayberry, Hooterville. I've been in big cities, I've been in Springdale City meetings, I've been in Fayetteville City meetings. And this stuff doesn't go on like this. If you have a problem, you come here, you express it, but you don't personally attack people. And I admonish this council to stop that. Do not let people stand here on this, with this podium and personally attack people. Make your grievances known. That's the right of all the citizens of this city, and it's the right of the citizens of any city, but not to personally attack people. That never gets us anywhere, okay? It's my two cents worth. I had a little bit more, but two guys took up an hour, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We'll move on, uh, on the agenda, old business, uh, there is none. Under new business, we have ordinance 2021 dash two. Entertained a motion to bring this to the table? A motion. Second. Roll call.
I apologize. We were first.
Larry was, yeah.
And Evan was second. And the roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
James? Apologize for getting distracted.
All right, ordinance, uh, 2021, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to waive a reading, waive the three readings and read by title only. So, the motion for Mr. Wakefield. Second for Mr. McGee. It's good, again, go ahead, roll call.
Do another roll call. Uh, James McGee?
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang?
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield?
Yes.
Evan Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021 dash two, an ordinance amended, Alma ordinance number 2015 dash five. This is an ordinance that was prepared by, uh, Cody, right? Mr. Schindler put this together? So, I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor so you can explain what this is about.
Where we've, uh, of course, been dealing with the business license stuff. And this is just to help kind of clarify, um, some of the language that did not, um, have on the original, uh, ordinance. And so, we felt like, you know, this was after, of course, uh, communicating with you guys and of course, everybody who's been working on the whole business license project. We felt like this would be, uh, you know, applicable to where we can say, hey, no, no home based businesses or anything. That way we can effectively line out for inspections and everything else. So, just, because if you do contract work, there's, there's way too many businesses. There are limited fees, so we didn't feel like those would be applicable. And there wasn't any language specifying that, um, they should be exempt or anything. So, we feel like they should be exempt because they already have a paid us permit to use. And plus being able to manage all the lawn care companies, that's, that's kind of tough, so. And plus with one, uh, having enforcers, it's also going to be everywhere.
Any questions?
Can I make a statement? Tony, you've done an outstanding job on this. This has been a hot topic for the entire time I've been on the council. It was our first meeting and this has come a long ways. And I'm proud to have this in front of us. I think you've done a great job. And I know you've spent a lot of time and effort into it, it's not everybody's scene, but this is, this is good. I appreciate that. I've also added the QR code and the, uh, website link as well to where they didn't feel to, uh, get the permit. And of course, we just got the email today regarding putting the forms online. And so, that'll be up soon. We're just waiting, of course, on, I guess, the, uh, the people to write the script for it to be.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, we need a motion to adopt ordinance 2021 dash two. I make the motion. Motion for Mr. Dacker.
I'll second that.
Second for Mr. McGee. Roll call.
Larry Blasen?
Yes.
Evan Becker?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 2021 dash two does pass. We'll get on to, uh, department reports. We'll start with Mr. Wakefield in the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last month, the city of Alma Fire Department responded to two structured fires, one three single and one wildland fire. So, we would like to say thank you to the, well, we spent a lot of time up there, but they were, in my 30 years of being on fire, it's the first time we've ever had a business take out, half page ad in Fort Smith paper, so thank you, so we appreciate that. The guys work real hard up there, it's nice to know you business and recognize that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Any questions for, uh, the chief? All good? We'll move on. Uh, next up, Police Chief, Mr. Pointer.
Thank you, Council. First thing I would like to. First thing, uh, I'll comment on where all the questions are coming from for me for the last few days. You guys are aware of the Still Missing Morgan documentary Saturday night. Um, this was, uh, uh, something we've been working on for almost two years now. Um, that's not the whole thing, that's kind of like a preview of it. Uh, hopefully, if everything goes right, it'll, it'll develop into a full documentary and be several series long. Since then, our, our goal for that was to, um, you know, get some of that information out to the public that's never been put out and, and, uh, let the public know kind of what direction we're going in the case and, and, uh, and it is generating leads. Um, since the documentary aired, uh, we've, we've taken about 175 leads, so, um, that may not sound like a lot, uh, but in a almost 26 year old case, that's, that's excellent. And so, we appreciate everyone that's, that's reporting, uh, calling in with the leads. Uh, one day and, and I've been asked about this several times the last few days. Um, that people aren't getting, they're not getting notified on, on what we're doing. And, uh, I just like to bring that to y'all's attention that we're looking at every lead that's coming in. It's an open criminal investigation, we can't comment on that, we can't. Uh, obviously, we're a small department. We don't have the manpower to sit there and call everyone of those people back and, and let them know, even if we could, let them know that what's going on. Uh, but we are, uh, looking at each lead as they come in. Um, you know, the great thing about this is, you know, people were upset that, uh, because of other things going on, part of the documentary got cut off for some people. Um, so it's going to re-air again this Saturday, uh, at a different time, but it'll be on at noon this Saturday on the local CBS channel. Uh, another exciting thing is, uh, uh, because of that, because the response that from this area is, um, there's a, a channel in Little Rock that, that wanted to pick that up in the area in Little Rock also. Um, that was, I got a text just a few minutes ago that that has been confirmed. And so, it will air, re-air here this Saturday, the following Saturday is going to air in Little Rock. So, and again, that, that's, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't know a whole lot about broadcasting and that type of thing, but that's expensive to do because they're cutting out all commercials here in that time. So, um, we, we really thank these, uh, the news stations that are doing this. Um, there's going to be some more things that we're doing in this and, uh, some of those I can't talk about yet, but, uh, when I can, and, and I'll let you guys know. Uh, the next thing is, is we, uh, applied for and we were awarded, uh, a block grant, law enforcement block grant. Uh, it's not, a big one, it's, it's about $2,500. Um, we, we got the approval letter for that last week. Uh, had to have the mayor sign off on it and get it sent back in. We're just waiting on the official approval letter. Uh, as soon as that comes in, then it's, we, we can't just go buy whatever we want with it. It's, it's got to be equipment related and, and, uh, there's got to be certain guidelines. So, once we get that approval, we'll be, uh, buying a few things. Um, quick update on the 911 consolidation, we're continuing to meet on that. Uh, continuing to develop a plan for, uh, consolidation. Lots of discussions going on with that right now and, and, but I, I think we're on the right track and right plan and, uh, just a lot of unknowns that still have to be worked out. Another update, it seems like, I, when I was thinking about these things, it almost seems like a broken record sometimes. Each month you hear the same thing and, uh, still working on the radios. Um, I, um, had some problems with a couple of quotes we got, and so, trying to get. had some problems with a couple of the quotes we got, and so trying to get some answers on those. And, and, uh, and then there, actually, Mora, the local Mora rat came out today and, uh, wants to have a lunch in, in Carver County and kind of, uh, explain, uh, some of the benefits of the ALN. Uh, we're the, we're the only department in Carver County that has ALN. So, you know, that's, that's a good direction that, that obviously if it's affordable, uh, and that might be long, long-term planning there, but, uh, those are some things that's going on. Other than that, uh, just, um, a week from Saturday, Saturday, April 24th. Uh, just a reminder, we're doing the drug takeback at Walmart. As always, we have the, the 24-hour drop box here at Police Department, but on that day, we'll be at the Alma Walmart, uh, collecting unused prescription drugs. During that time, um, I had a meeting, a couple of meetings with the Boys and Girls Club. We're trying to partner with them on a few things. So, um, during the same time as the takeback at Walmart, we're actually going to be doing a, a stuff the squad car. And that's where we can, uh, the, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, sometimes struggles during the summer to put on their summer programs and, and so they use a lot of supplies. So this is a way that, that we can help them with some of those supplies. So we'll be sent there. We'll have a list of things that, that the Boys and Girls Club can use and, and, uh, people can go into Walmart and we'll see if we can fill a police car up. So, uh, we'll be doing that on the 24th and 10 to 2. Only other thing is, mentioned at last month's meeting, there was, uh, a golf tournament planned through the focus group. Uh, their last meeting, it was decided to postpone that for right now, just for, on that time of the plan. Uh, but we are hoping that that can, that can be done in the future. Other than that, if you guys have questions, that's all I've got.
Anyone? Good. Next, Jim. Thank you, Chief. Uh, up next, Public Works, Mr. Yardley.
I have one idea that I need to just pass out. I apologize for not doing that in advance.
Thank you.
This is a, uh, this is a records destruction request. Um, it's, we're told we do this each year. These are records that are housed at our, um, our wastewater plant. And, uh, we're required to keep records for a certain period of time. The records from 2017 have reached their, their life by the, by the standard. So this is a list of the particular items and you have to have council approval to, uh, to remove those records and dispose of them. So I would ask for that tonight.
So moved. All in favor?
Say aye.
All right. Any opposed?
All right. Thank you for that. As I said, that's just a formality, but we'll do that with council approval to, to. All right. Um, I trust you received the council report that I sent you. Just a couple of things. As I noted in the report, the, uh, the sidewalk project reached substantial completion. There's still a few, uh, items that they're working on to try to, to finish up. But, uh, it's definitely at the substantial completion stage. We'll, uh, we'll receive a, uh, a final pay request here in the next few weeks from, for that project. The Rudy Road project is, is the, uh, probably the biggest thing on the horizon. As you see from our report, uh, we did, uh, we did get the, the $300,000, uh, grant from the highway department to approve that road, rehab the road. And, um, they took bids on the project and, um, we knew full well when they went out for bids that it would be more than $300,000. The city would be responsible for the remaining, remaining portion of that, of that contract. And they did get a bid for $469,000. Jonathan Clements, the, uh, the project engineer at Highway Department indicated that he thought that was an exceptionally good price, uh, for what they've seen here recently and, uh, for what we're getting. And, uh, that would leave the city, uh, having to contribute $169,000 towards the rehab of the project. And as I stated in my report, I know that, I think that, that, that Mr. Thacker asked, uh, when I reported that we had received the reward, that we would have additional funds that we would have to do. He asked me how much was budgeted and then I told him at the time, $200,000. And, and actually that wasn't in the budget. It was not in the budget. Uh, it was in the unappropriated funds and, and in my mind, it was there, but, but it was not actually presented in the budget for approval. And I, and I, in retrospect, I assumed that was because I wasn't real sure what we were going to have to, to spend on it. But, uh, but now that we know that it's $169,000, I would ask for the council to approve, uh, contributing that portion to the project. And then we would, uh, put together a limited budget at some point before the end of the year to accommodate that change. And as I said, it'd be out of unappropriated funds and we have about $500,000 in unappropriated funds. So if, um,
Yeah, motion on that.
I would have been able to vote as well.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. McGee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Wakefield. All in favor?
Where do we see that on the budget?
Can you show that to us on the budget? The, the unappropriated funds that you said are there? Can you show me?
Um, yeah, let me, let me get a copy. Oh, sorry to bring that up. Let me find that.
Sorry to be that guy.
Hey, that's good. Somebody needs to be that guy. Let's see here. Okay. In the summary at the, uh, at the front, which shows projected carryover, that would be the unappropriated funds in the budget. This was from your, the budget that I presented to you? Yes, this amount down here. All right, this, this, well, that's ours. But this is the, this is the, the, uh, the projected carryover and it's very conservative. It'll be more like $600,000, but that's, that's why I presented, that's why I presented to y'all at the time of the budget.
Yes, I understand for some reason. I got you.
You, you can keep this and I can, I have another one. You can have that one. Okay. So no problem. That's where the fund would come from. That was after all the other, um, projects that had been approved had been, um, have been budgeted. So.
Good. And so then again, um, just so everybody were clear with everything, what you asked a motion for, again, was what?
The approval of an expenditure of $169,000 of city funds.
To go along with the?
To go along with the $300,000.
And so we had a, a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
So moving.
And Mr. Wakefield was the second?
Eddie.
So, um, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I might add that, um, like all projects of this type, they're quantity-based projects. So these, the, uh, the contracts are not exactly what you'll ultimately spend on it. It could be, it could be less. It could be more. On the, uh, Column Lane and Maple Shade projects, um, we were awarded a, a grant. And then we, we provided an additional $90,000 on that project. And when the project was complete, they handed us back the $90,000 because it, the quantities didn't, didn't make it to the, to what they had, had the engineer had originally proposed. So the engineer puts together quantities. All that the contractor does is provide dollar amounts per line item. And then that, that projects out to a budget and a, and a contract. But, but, but those are, those are not written in stone. So this could come in way under $460,000, or there's a possibility it could be a little bit higher. At that time, I'd have to come back to you for an additional amount. And I'm hoping that, and that's usually not the case. The highway department usually estimates high. And, and like they did on the, on the Column Lane, they didn't even spend their portion on the Column Lane and Maple Shade projects. So, um, I'm hoping that'll happen again. So. Any more questions about that? And this is, this is a highway department project. This is not a city project. I will not be responsible for this project. Not that I won't be responsible, because unfortunately I will be, but, but I'm just saying that, that I will not be managing this project. It'll be managed by the highway department, just like Column Lane and Maple Shade was. We'll still get all the complaints and we'll still have to, to run interference for our citizens with contractors. But, but, uh, this one will not be a city project. It'll be a state highway department project. So.
Good.
Just, uh, one more thing is that, uh, starting tomorrow night, it's about 10 o'clock, we're going to do water mains flushing. I think you saw that in your report. The biggest thing is that sometimes we'll get dirty water complaints the, the morning after they flush a particular area. And, um, best citizen today from Kibler that came in and she had a, a filter that came out of, um, I think it was a, a humidifier. And, um, what she discovered was this, this coating on her filter. It was kind of a brownish-red coating. And of course, we identified that immediately. It was manganese. And, uh, as y'all, as y'all know from, if you've been here long enough, you know that we have manganese in our water and sometimes it precipitates out and it causes that reddish-brown water. Uh, silvered iron, it's harmless to consume. It's just that it's a nuisance. And, uh, anyway, so we had to spend some time in Verne today discussing what that, what that was. And that's the reason we flush our lines, um, uh, on a, uh, semi-annual basis to try to keep that at bay. So I'm not, I'm not sure if Kibler does that or not, but we flush the Red Hill system as well when we do ours. So that system's done. I think the city of Dara flushes. Anyway, so just be aware that that's happening this weekend and it could cause some dirty water issues. It just lasts for a few minutes when they turn the water on. It's whatever's in the length of line between the main and their house that usually has some dirty water and they flush it for a minute and it goes away. So. Other than that, I just wanted to encourage y'all to be thinking about, I know you said this multiple times, but I just wanted to be at the forefront of your mind that, that we need to look at potentially refinancing our bonds and, 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 uh, getting some additional funding for projects in the future. And I've told you before, you know, I, I presented to you before that, that I've got about $5 million in string improvements that we need to make and, um, don't have the funds to do that, of course. And, um, you know, we, we have depended on, uh, bond issues to get those things done in the past. We're reached, we're reaching a point where I think it's about November of this year, we could potentially be eligible to refinance bonds. And if, uh, if y'all would start maybe studying that and, and determining what kind of funding would be available and what kind of projects you'd like to see and, uh, see if we could do that. Anyway, I just wanted to encourage you. So thank you for everything. If, uh, if you have any questions?
Has there been any movement on, uh, 64, the East Cherry Street? You know, from downtown with our, or with the highway department?
Yeah. I mean, they're, they've been doing some survey work here in, in the last couple of weeks. And, um, people have been asking questions, what are those guys out there doing out there by the creek? So they are working on that bridge survey work and, and, um, you know, this project will not begin until about this time next year. I mean, it's a year away. So, um, we don't, uh, we don't expect a whole lot of activity here in town until then. So. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. That's fine.
Plenty, Mr. Schindler. Now, I did not skip past you this week, this month.
Like this time in the trial? Well, make up. Getting, uh, so we've been staying busy in the planning. Uh, we have 60 permits issued for the month of March, full revenue, $2,064.00. That's actually lower than, uh, you know, previous years, but it is, um, high for this year. I'm hoping that trend kind of continues very thick back up. But I do know construction costs have been really high, especially if you look at lumber prices. Uh, so I do think that's going to impact some construction. But we did have two new residential construction permits issued for a total value of $340,000. Both of those, uh, residential additions are in honeysuckle or country method. Uh, one commercial remodel for $66,000. So we've also been reviewing plans for Walmart. They are doing, they're going to be doing a remodel. That's going to be a huge project. Run share on the dollar amount. But we've been reviewing the plans and there's 57 pages of, uh, of engineer drawings that we've been going through. Uh, it looks like they're doing automotive, pharmacy, um, I think the garden area, uh, bathrooms, checkout, uh, I'm sure I'm missing some photo area. So, and of course, the outside part as where, um, the facade and, you know, some of the parking lot as well. The bids will be, uh, they'll receive them in June and so they won't start construction until about August. I do know that they are switching to all self-checkout. I know that can be kind of a hot, hot issue. Um, that's just based on what we've seen on the plans. So just be warning here, everybody. Uh, business license, PB still doing inspections. That's actually a mistake on, on the 50 being completed. There's actually been over 100. So we have about 50 to 60 left. And so we're almost close to receiving all the other, uh, business license applications as well. So, uh, we sent out, um, a couple of reminders and then, um, this week or maybe last week, we've been going to the rest of the businesses, um, and just making sure that they receive the business application. So we'll start, um, kind of, you know, move forward with that. Uh, planning commission, we didn't meet in March, of course, and then April as well, with, uh, two members not being able to attend. And so we're still missing that one member. I didn't want to put those two members for not being able to make the meetings on them. We're still missing a planning commission member. So, uh, yeah. If anybody knows of anybody wanting to join the planning commission, send them my way and I'll give them the application.
Too bad all those people left so quick before you got it.
I had, that's what I was telling Rose. So, uh, yeah, updates on the five goals. Still working on zoning maps. Should be done within the next month or so. Just keep getting drawn, death picks up. Uh, finish the subdivision land development regulations. Uh, still being planning commission to meet on that. Um, set up the active trans, uh, priority model for bike and pedestrian plan. We'll be having public meetings soon regarding, uh, some economic development and stuff. And, uh, I believe the mayor will be discussing that. Also finish the business license process earlier next year. Uh, the online payment will be on soon. So inspections are still occurring. We don't have that many left. So that's getting almost completed. And then attend training for various certifications. Municipal League has been, uh, doing some cool planning, uh, webinars, uh, every Tuesday for, for the month of April. So I've been attending those as well as, uh, some random, you know, ESRI, uh, RPIS stuff, as well as, um, anything zoning, planning related. So. Can't do the app till, um, the maps are completed. So. And that's it for my report. Any questions?
Anyone have any comments, questions?
No, I think Cody, you're doing an awesome job.
Yeah.
Con- contrary of what other folks' opinions may have been, right? But, you know, I think from a council perspective, we do have to give you, you know, kudos as far as, you know, what you and PB have been able to accomplish so far in this year.
Yeah. And, and I want to make sure the council knows this. And I, and I think I've always tried to let you know what our, what our department heads are up to, what they're doing, the work that they're putting in. And Cody, again, one of the reasons that, that I love him so much is because he comes with that planning background too. And, you know, when we have somebody that comes over and looks at a piece of property that we have in the downtown area, buy it, you know, and they're, they start talking about a development that's like a, you know, a million-plus development. And then they go, we can't do it. We can't put, we're not going to spend this money in there because we still have these issues with our codes, with our regulations. Or we, we can't get what we need for rent over here when we still have people living over here. And so these are all things that Cody's been tasked with. He's been working on these. He's been putting this stuff together. He's been, um, trying to make sure that we don't, um, you know, that we have, uh, regulations in place, not just for residential development, but for commercial development. So that we don't, you know, that we start looking at things on the front end of, of, of the project and not run into things on the back end of the project. When it starts coming to having a strategic plan in place for the city, and we, we started talking about this back in 2019, and the bike and pedestrian plan is a great example of this. We adopted a bike and pedestrian plan. Great. But we never, we never had a, a plan in action of the, the steps that we were going to prioritize to implement the plan. And so we still have to work on that. And that's one of the things that Cody's been working on. And then being able to adopt that plan into the overall strategic plan for the city. And so I'm telling you, Cody, he's not been in a basement and his office does not have a door. So we, we don't have a basement. Cody doesn't have a door. He probably wishes he, he had a door. But Cody has been working his tail off and it's been very constructive, very good work. And, and again, um, I don't care what anybody else says, but that And again, I don't care what anybody else says, but that hire right there was a home run. And so Cody, we appreciate you and I surely appreciate you a whole lot.
I appreciate the work you did on the business.
It was a mess when I first came in though. I'm glad it's hopefully going to be laid out better.
All right. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
We'll move on in the agenda. Ms. Reynolds, floor is yours.
Thank you. I won't take too awful long. I sent you all quite a bit in my council, excuse me, my department report this month. I do want to hit on the fact that March was a month, as I said, of aha moments. We, Kim and I both feel like it was the month that all of our hard work is starting to pay off and we're seeing the fruits of our labor. Again, I'm not so arrogant as to say that we've completely arrived, but I can say that we are seeing a whole lot more than we saw before and that our processes are getting cleaner and more crisp. As a team, we are all working very well together and I did want to mention that even the mayor chimes in and helps us quite a bit. I hollered out the door last week or maybe the week before and I said that you're on your own, you've got to answer the front door and the telephone calls and I'll be back in a few minutes. I heard him holler from his office, sure thing. So I just want to make sure that I'm painting a clear picture, that everyone in our office fits along very well and all of the department heads and the city clerk's office get along very well. We all joke with each other and don't take anything personally. And continuing, these are all steps I keep repeating month after month and I'm just trying to keep you up to date on it. We are still working on the employee handbook that our department heads are going line by line, sentence by sentence, period by period, and even misspelled words and putting their input and we're doing our best. I've only had two, that's all I've had. And so that's still moving forward. We hope to bring that to you all in the next month or so. And we have hit a bump in the road with the credit card process, which is maddening to me. We have the machine in-house so that we could take payments through the front door. And yesterday, your report's going to say that it was supposed to be going live on April 14th. However, when we tried to go live yesterday morning, there was a problem with the connection, with the machine into the ethernet. We've got to get a splitter, but then we will be going live. So hopefully next month, I'm going to tell you, we really are live with credit cards. The snag on the website is a script that's not cooperating very well. It's all more technical than what I understand. As long as we're getting front door pay cards, then that's going to be the second phase online. I did get the annual financial statement posted as is required and I have a copy of that in your packet. And I'll tell you, I found it very fun to do. I didn't have, I had Mark to come and tell me how he did his and I had no other notes until about, it's due by March 31st, until about March 25th. And I was going through the fixed assets, which is what all of this is back here, and I happened to see a stack of notes and one of them covered that financial report, so I was able to whip it out pretty fast. And so I did meet the deadline. This is going to be important for me to make sure that you all are aware of. We are going to have an audit of our property insurance. We're going to do that the first week of October. Hopefully I'll have the fixed assets list pretty well complete by then and we'll have a good idea of what our actual inventory is. At this moment in time, we're not sure if the value of our properties lists the contents inside the buildings or if it's just on the buildings. And so the only way that we can actually determine that is if we have someone come out here and let us know that. I have a feeling, because it's not been appreciated the way that we probably shouldn't have been doing it, is that we're probably underinsured on our buildings, possibly not insured on our contents, and that's not sure if all that has worked together, that's still to come out and watch, and then open insured on our vehicles. But the reason we're doing it in October is because it's probably going to raise our premiums and you'll need to know that for the 2022 budget. And I didn't want to be doing it right now because we have to come up with that. And so again, I was speaking about the fixed assets, that's what all of this back here is, and I'm making progress a little bit each day and I'm feeling really good about where that list is going. And I put in your packet so that you can see, we have created an asset acquisition and a disposal form, so this will be the first point in any asset that we acquire or dispose of. This will be the first part of the transactions. And so if we acquire something, this will come to me along with all the paperwork behind it. And if it's disposed of, then somebody's going to tell me how we disposed of it. So that was just for you all to have a review. I'm going to go on. The historical documents, I kind of did something really Sean alike this week. We have a lot of historical documents that I found, or we found, pardon me, when we were cleaning out the fire room. And some of them go back to 1879, they're handwritten in pencil. I found something I thought Eddie would find pretty interesting as a fire truck from 1948 that we paid $4,600 for. And so
Tell what they cost me, I would do.
Yes.
And so I thought, well, we can get a display case for a fairly reasonable cost. We can put it out here and display these historical items. And so I found one in the bargain column for $80 and I said, will you deliver it for $50? Is it in good shape? It only needs to be cleaned? He said, that's all it needs. And he showed up and it was in terrible, terrible shape. And I gave him $10 for gas and said, no, thank you. So eventually we're going to have a display case out here with some of those historical documents that are actually very interesting. The cash collections module, is that in full swing? And I gave you all an example of what we were doing in the past, that's what these journal entries are. And they can be very confusing and can cause a lot of mistakes because you have to debit and you have to credit the expenses differently than you debit and credit revenue. And so we were doing all of that manually and every deposit was entered manually and every bit of revenue is entered manually with a handwritten receipt. So the cash collection module has taken that away and it's automated that so that we, we had to put in the GL codes, but it has taken away the error. So if there's an error, it's because Sean entered in the GL code wrong. And I hope that I haven't done that, haven't found that I have. And so I wanted to give you an example of that handwritten process that was happening in the past. So we're very, very grateful. Again, I told you all last month and the month before, thank you for approving that purchase. That was money well spent for this city because it is helping us tremendously and helping us to be very efficient. We also have our new electronic deposit process going. It only took us a couple of days to get up in full swing and we get credit for our deposits instantly. Kim runs through and if I'm missing anything, Kim, you share with them to make sure that I'm not missing any steps. But each afternoon, we just run those checks through and those are electronically uploaded to the bank and we have credit immediately. We still have to go to the bank for cash, but the checks are posted and the revenue's posted immediately. And then Kim, and I gave you a copy of this as well, has given us, has given a great form that she gives to me each day and it's a daily task report. But what she's doing now is in the past, we were only reconciling once a month and we were reconciling based on what the bank statement said, not a true reconciliation. So each morning, she's reconciling all of our accounts, anything that's clearing. And so that's getting done on a daily basis. And so she's giving me the bank balance, any outstanding checks and any pending accounts payable. So at any given point in time, I can have a snapshot of about how much money we have. So if you called me, Eddie, and asked me how much we had in a particular account, I can tell you within $10,000, $20,000, a million dollars. I'm not sure. I can get pretty close. And then of any deposits that are going to be added. So that's been a very great tool and I appreciate her doing that and she did that and it's helped me. Again, the future goals, I talk about them each month, we're still on target for those. In regards to our FOIA requests, in March, we had two meeting agenda requests, two financial data, zero resolutions and one ordinance request. And now we're getting to the part that everybody likes and that's the money. In the general fund, we had $212,000 in revenue, $212,473 in revenue. And it says that the expenses are $465,000 and I believe that is what the report says and it's going to clear up in April. And the reason it is so high is, and you can look at your revenue and expense report under the general fund on page three if you want to, there's $95,365 listed in line item 141602. And that is, because that was corrections that are still being made. And so that really, month to month, should be a zero. And so we actually did do the debit and the credit and so it is truly a zero that that was done in April instead of March. So you're not seeing the zero here. So I think instead of on that page for the general fund, general expenses, instead of $165,289 in expenses, we're really sitting at 69,924. Then I'm going on through my pages and everything looks okay. When I get to the fire department, Eddie, we are, it shows that our total of expenses was only $1,137, but actually we had an $8,520 refund that we posted and so that's skewing that number. We actually had $9,658 in expenses. All of our percentages are looking really good. We're in about the 30% more, which is about 25 to 30%, which is where we should be. So at the end of it, if we take our revenue and minus our expenses, I believe we're actually sitting at about $166,538 in, over instead of, instead of the 253 that you all were seeing. And the street department, there's in line item 23103, it says that we're 110% over budget and I know Mark appreciates that. And that is actually the 2020 revenue that we had talked about for 126,000 that was posted in '21. And Mark, you've probably not seen it on your report, but I did add your capital outlet budget amount of $169,000. And when we get down to the pool, we are, we had $67.20 in revenue, which was our interest. And we had $10,633 in expenses, which is us getting ready for the pool season. So those are accurate numbers, but that will be changing here very, very quickly. And I've got on your financial summary about what our average bank balance is and where we were sitting at the end of March. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. And then overall, as a financial perspective, the city, from a financial perspective, the city hasn't changed. I moved $114,000 from the general funds to the park outlet account, which is your Mark strictly for parks. And I did that because that was a dormant account. We were getting a $6 a month fee on it and we were on the verge of it closing. So I moved that money over to keep that account activated. Our first quarter franchise tax collections was $65,165 and this is 24% of our budgeted amount of $264,000. And I thought it would be very interesting if you all saw the kind of interest that you're collecting on your various bank accounts. And the last thing that I think is extremely important to mention is that we got a letter and it's in your packet that stated that in response to the prosecuting attorney regarding the 2019 legislative audit that the audit found will not be presented to the Arkansas governmental bond board and that pending their, I mean, from their review, there's no other action to be taken. And then it was all standard operational procedures that were not up to par and that nothing was illegal. And so we are clear and going forward on that. And I may have pictured that up, feel free to add to that if you want.
No, that's right on. No money, nothing missing and there was no indication of anything illegal.
And you know, audits are really good. They keep us on our toes, not that anybody's doing anything illegal, but it's easy when you're going very fast in a daytime for something to get overlooked. And so when somebody finds it and brings it to your attention and it's a process issue, it's very good for us to have audits. And so there was nothing illegal, it's just that we need to make sure our procedures are tight. That is the conclusion of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Shaw? She didn't really hit on it a lot when she was talking about it, but you know, the work again, that her and Kim, and Ron, Ron is involved in it too, but especially her and Kim, has just been phenomenal. I mean, it's just the, the procedures that they're putting in place are those procedures that we've needed for a long time so that we just don't have any issues. We can, we know where we are. We can very quickly get a good picture of where we are financially. And we reconcile every day. We don't wait until the end of the month and then you just take for granted what the statement from the bank says. They actually match it up and they, you know, every day, the transactions, they close out every day the business. And so everything has to balance and everything has to work so that it's reconciled. And so it's comforting, it's very nice to know. So again, you've got to know that Shawna and Kim have put a lot of hours in and have done some great work.
And it goes back to the teamwork that we talked about. We've got a great team.
All right. Any other questions? Nothing? Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parks. Signs, we've started putting up the park hour signs. I don't think we have them all up yet, but we'll get those up and then we'll work the proclamations that actually set those hours for the signs. Are you going to be ready to meet next week?
I'm waiting on you.
Okay, so we're going to, we need to get together next week. We'll be to a point where we can get after that. I need your email. I went to send you some of the files on the playground equipment and I don't have your email.
Okay, have you talked to Mr. Warner? Because he's gotten some other people with playground equipment.
Okay. Yeah, it's been a couple of weeks since I've spoken with him, so, but I can, you know, I'll call it. But
I can't.
Okay. All right. So I'll call Jim tomorrow. And then Shawna has your email, so I'll send that to you also. Okay. So water parks coming along. We have, they have the pools and the tubs painted, getting cleaned up. They're going to start putting water in the pools here within the next couple of weeks. They're continuing to just do some maintenance, you know, in the middle of also trying to keep grass mowed and all that. But it's coming along, it's running on time. We had to replace an ice maker. We're clearing out some things that haven't been used in a while to try to give them some more space in the kitchen. I think the ice maker was the biggest thing we had to replace. We're having to work on the security system and we're getting some quotes on that. A squirrel kind of got in there and ate some things it wasn't supposed to eat, it's caused some problems. So we'll get that fixed. But the water park's coming along, it's on schedule. And that's pretty much it on parks. We've got a full staff working right now in parks with Ethan and Gordon who are doing a great job. If you have any questions about the parks. In the mayor's notes, talk a little bit about the, we got the district court report. We're not 100% back to where we were pre-COVID, but we're close. So it's nice to start seeing those totals being 25, 26, 27, $30,000 and not $4,000, $5,000 like they were last month. The Southwest EMS report. And Chief Wakefield, you had brought this up before about us looking into the ordinance and the contract with these guys. Tell you where I'm at with this right now. It's the current ordinance that we have, it automatically kind of rolls over, but I've kind of set it to the side for just a minute until we figure out what we're Um, but I've kind of set it to the side for just a minute until we figure out what we're doing with 911 with these guys. Um, and there's some talk about whether or not that just goes to, uh, if it's going to be handled by the county, if it's going to be handled by individual cities. Uh, so, um, it's, it hasn't been forgotten. But we got to figure out what they're going to be doing, I guess, with 911.
There was a contract out there somewhere. I don't know where it's gone. Russell Light, myself, Marsha, and a couple others were involved in that. There were a lot of they contracted that specific response times and stuff like that. Model back from Van Groot's contract. And they had a five-year and then automatically renewed for a year. But, you know, it's going to be something that the city is going to continue to do. The law state and the county really couldn't have an ambulance contract. They had to attach to somebody else's, whatever. But it's been a long time. It might be best if we're going to continue to be in charge of our own ambulance provider and we look at allowing them to go and just see, make sure we're getting the citizens the best way we can.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Um, and, uh, Chief Pointer and I had talked about that before. One of the, the providers that was here at one time, you know, isn't anymore. And then I think the other ones out of Oklahoma, right? Is that, we?
Well, there's, there's a couple in Arkansas that are large contractors.
Yeah. We'll, uh, and that may be something that the council wants to do is to open that up, um, you know, for, uh, for bits and see what they're, you know, where we're going to go with that. I think that in fairness to whoever it is, they still need to know 911.
Absolutely. That's the number one thing right there.
Right, yeah. Uh, you know, if they're going to have to pay, if they're not going to have to pay, where their dispatch is or isn't. Um, so, uh, you know, we, we, we're not going to forget this, but we're, we have our hands tied right now with this. Jeff kind of made mention about that and Chief Wakefield knows this too. When they start talking about 911, um, that the, the number of fronts here that we're dealing with with 911 is incredible. It's not, and this isn't just as easy as saying, okay, we're going to consolidate 911. This state says that we have to. Um, there's a lot of moving parts to this. Um, you know, we have, uh, you know, a meeting, uh, next week with, you know, county officials, city officials, uh, city of Van Groot because we're the, we're the three that have the PSAPs. So we want to make sure our employees are taken care of and things are done correctly as we move forward. And so there's logistics, there's employees, there's, um, you know, a, a director that has to be hired. There's a lot of moving parts to this. So, um, as we get through that, then we'll come back and we'll start addressing this ambulance. Um, the, uh, COVID funds. You, you might hear some, some rumors about how much money the city's going to be, uh, receiving as part of the stimulus and the COVID funds that are, are being administered. Um, these funds this time are not going to go to the state and the state decide who gets them. They're supposed to come straight to the municipalities. Um, the problem is, right now, is there's still no clarification or guidance on how those funds can be spent. Um, and we're still not exactly sure how much money we are getting. And we really probably won't know until we actually get the check. We can only go by, you know, what, what's been posted out there. Um, and so the, um, you know, at this point, the instructions are, is to, if, if something shows up in our bank account or we get a check, that is immediately to go into a separate bank account. And we don't touch it until we get clarification of where we're going. Because we don't want to go spend some money and then kind of find out we, we couldn't do that.
So it's going to come with strings?
We don't know. That's the problem. Because before it did. Everything they've done to this point, they have, you know? Um, you know, that's one of, you know, I've expressed this frustration a couple of times was, you know, at the front end of COVID-19, they were saying, do this, do this, do this. You'll get your money back, you're going to get your money. And then at the end of it, um, you know, they were like, well, you know, you're going to have to absorb that, you're going to have to do that. If you, if you put up a permanent structure, I can get your money back, you know? So, but if you put up a structure and you want to tear it back down, then we'll give you your money back. Just, it didn't make any sense. Um, now, at the end of that, we ended up getting most, we got all of our money back, um, for the most part, not, but it was an end around the way they did it. So, you know, I, I don't know. But we, we don't need to be spending anything until we get clarification of what we can and can't do. Um, if there's going to be strings. If there's not going to be strings, they go, you can go do with it whatever you want. Great, then we'll deal with it. Um, the, uh, we've got the, uh, Cody made mention about that, about the economic group. Uh, we're, they're going to be meeting on the 22nd of this month. We've already had, uh, um, meetings with the, the regional folks and workforce services. Again, this is in a, uh, as we move forward to put together a strategic plan, uh, economic development plan for the city. Uh, we, uh, we are looking at, uh, some asset mapping and, and inventory. We're taking what we had from the Kickstart program and information that, that was gathered there. Um, the, uh, bike and pedestrian plan also gave us some, some good information, uh, retail strategies, um, back in eighteen, seventeen, somewhere, uh, bit of a, a study back in there. And, um, that gave us, um, that gave us some, some good information. But we, one of the things that we've seen when we start talking about economic development, um, one of the things that we've seen, especially like for downtown areas, that COVID has changed some trends. And so we, we, again, are reaching out to, um, the state economists and some other organizations and groups and workforce services. And we, we're, uh, wanting to put together some, some different data. Or I'm not going to say different, but we just want some, we just want some new numbers, some updated, um, so that we can, we can see where the trends are and where we're going. So that when we start, um, trying to evaluate ourselves and trying to see what we are, um, that we, we have a solid foundation to, uh, to grow on. And, you know, and that's important because you can say, well, we want to do this, but if we're not equipped to do that, then we've got to make a decision here. We either got to say, okay, well, this is where, what we're equipped to do and that's where we're going to go. Or we're going to say, okay, well, this is where we want to go. What do we need to do then? Right? We, we got to know what we have to do to be there. And so these are the, those things that we're looking at. And, uh, our downtown group is also getting back together. There's, uh, uh, Melinda McSpadden, myself, and Brian Huff. We, we are meeting, uh, here in another week and, uh, and getting together, putting our heads together. Melinda has some, some ideas and some things she wants to go for the, uh, the downtown development. And then we're going to get that group back together. That was one of those things that we were working on, um, in 2019. And, um, we, we had the area mapped. We had, we, the next step was to charter that group so that they, they had their own teeth and could, um, uh, you know, develop that downtown area. You know, again, landowners are involved in that group. So they, they can do a lot of things, they'll have a lot of power. And, um, and so we're going to getting those guys back together also so that they can be moving forward. So we're, or as I told somebody the other day, I'm, I'm, I'm so sick of COVID, I'm done with COVID. Uh, that, uh, now we're getting back into the, um, you know, the, the stuff that, that we, we needed to be working on anyway. And that is being able to put these, um, these plans in place and see the progress and see the movement. So we're, we're getting, we're getting back to what we were doing back in 2019. Uh, June 11th is, uh, is the date for the ribbon cutting downtown. We don't have a time yet. As soon as we, um, as soon as we get a time, I will make sure that all of the city council members know what that is. Um, we, and when we start talking about getting groups back together, we, we want to start talking about our festivals and things that we can start doing as a city. And, uh, and so those discussions are also going on. Matt, we have, uh, have a small meeting tomorrow. So, uh, it's, it's just, it's from, from where I am and, and, and looking out, it's, it's nice to see all of these things starting to roll again and get to going and, and doing and being what we were, um, pre-COVID. So, uh, that's where we are. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, on the downtown, um, as I've driven by there the last couple of days, I've noticed there's a lot of, I think it's needing to be done on some of the new plants and stuff down through there, just some of the, the stuff in those beds, some of that stuff being trimmed up. Is there a plan currently for that? Is that all under our current, uh, parks guys or do we have that contract now?
No. And Mark, where are we with the hiring that?
Um, you may remember that during the, uh, the budget process, we talked about hiring a, a person, a landscaper. I had difficulty with that. Um, I actually reached out to some landscapers to ask for assistance and, and, um, they said that they're hard to come by right now, people with any experience. And, um, there was, there was one person that, um, we, you know, we've advertised for that position and we've probably received, I don't know, sixty applications and, but a lot of them are unqualified even though we specifically listed the qualifications. But there, um, there's one individual that, uh, that I reached out to today that we got an application from and, and, um, I'm hoping to hear back from him tomorrow. He has not responded to my request for a call, so, um, and he actually works, uh, currently for Greenview, the people that actually installed this, this, that landscaping on, on, on the streets. So he might actually be a pretty good match for, uh, for the city. And, uh, he did submit an application, so I'm assuming he's interested. And, uh, so, uh, I'll let y'all know as soon as I hear something back from him. Um, you know, I've been watching it every day and I mean, it, it seems to grow five inches every day. I mean, it's amazing how quickly these plants are filling in. Unfortunately, there's weeds in there with the plants and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not out of control yet. It'll get there quickly. If we don't get somebody on board here in the next week or so, then we're going to have to, I guess we're just going to have to rally the troops, get the parks guys and the street guys out there and just do some minimal weeding just to get the, get the plants that have come up out of the way so that they don't encroach on the others. So, um, hopefully we get somebody in place here next week or so. If we don't, then, then we'll, we'll, we'll address it as, as with the existing staff.
One more question. Um, Mr. Fisher was talking about festivals and stuff downtown. Um, has anything more been discussed other than just him kind of giving a heads up? And do we, I mean, I, I kind of have some interest in, in some of that going on. I think that'd be kind of cool to.
Yeah, has he been included in the, in any conversations, I guess, at this point?
Talking about, you're talking about the Steel House, the Steel Horse Rally specifically?
Well, not even just the Steel Horse that they do enforcement. There's something similar. You talked, there's Snow and some others doing some kind of rally or something down. Um, is that, that discussed more with this kind of first kind of?
It's fair enough, I've heard of it, but it's kind of very.
It's, it's been discussed, yeah. We, um, and I can't remember now exactly when the, the discussions began. Um, it was probably last year sometime when we started talking about that. Of course, you know, the council did rally in Smith last year. And, um, and so we, we, we did have a couple of meetings. I, I met with Chief Pointer and we, we kind of discussed some of the logistics and, you know, you know, looking at the pros and the cons and, you know, where we're at there. Um, there was, uh, some, some legal issues that we needed to look at. I believe you were, uh, brought in.
I talked to the state.
Yeah. He, he went to the state to kind of see where we were there. And, uh, so, yeah, yeah, we've, we've been, you know, um, there was a day, uh, that Dennis came over and, and, uh, myself, Mr. Fisher, uh, Mr. Snow, um, I guess Mark, but he stopped by for a different reason. And that's, that's kind of, Mark, Mark was there, but we had a question about something and that's why he came over there. Uh, but anyway, yeah, so we, we did, yeah.
Is something we're interested in pursuing potentially?
Yeah.
Is there nothing that would cause us not to pursue that?
I, you know, I, I don't, I haven't seen anything yet.
I know Steel Horse enforcement that you feel and it's, it's, and people come from all over and it's always a, a great time and like they do it really, really well. So that just kind of, you know, I'm just curious.
And, and what I, one of the things that I expressed to them was one of the, one of what I like, I love about our car show and cruise that we do, uh, in the fall with our late summer with, with SADA is that SADA self-polices. So we don't have a lot of issues or problems. I, I'm a bit of, I don't, I don't think I'm speaking out of bounds there. Um, and they do a really good job of, of, um, presenting and putting on that show and being respectful and mindful. And I will tell you that, um, and, and I know Gordon will tell you this and I bet you that all of Mark's, uh, street guys will tell you this, the 71 is cleaner when they leave than it was when they showed up in town that day to put on that car show. Because they'll, after all the cruise is done, you'll see them, they're all going up and down, 71 picking up all, if there's any trash out there, they'll pick it up. So, you know, so these were those things that we talked about with those guys. They understood that, they saw that, um, you know? And, uh, you know, they're, they're, uh, what they love about us is, is, you know, um, they like the vision, they like where we're going. If they are here, it's very easy to go to all of the, all their favorites routes that they like to go, all the, all the roads. And, um, and it just makes sense logistically. And so we're going to, I, I think, and that's what I've always said. What we want to do is set, is set the table. And so we want to make ourselves a place where people want to come and put festivals on and go to festivals. We want to, we want to be a, a city that people want to come into the city of us. Um, and then, and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to set the table. So, and as we learn more and as that progresses, then we'll, we'll share more as we go. I, I, I'm reluctant sometimes to put things like that out there because I, you know, I, I don't want to say something and then, and then not come around. I want to make sure that we're all going in the right direction, people we're saying. So, uh, anything else?
Oh, are we, are we doing away with the mask mandate?
For the city?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. We, we put out a, um, and all the department heads and, and the library was, uh, they were all told the same thing. Um, as a city goes, uh, we have always, um, supported and enforced whatever the government, the governor's, uh, proclamations and reclaims were, and we'll continue to do that. Um, and once the, the mask mandate was lifted, we lifted the mask mandate, um, for the city. All the employees that I know of, again, were good with that. Um, the department heads were all told, told that if, if they wanted to keep some procedures in place, um, that was fine. I, I supported it 100%. Same thing with the library. Um, if the library wants to, uh, to enforce and keep masks in, in place, then I will support that 100%. So that's, that's where we are. Anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
I'll be in a second. I've got a second for Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye. And there better not be anybody who vote.
How did you get all that, Mark?
Uh, I hope so. I hope so.
Oh, shit, big bowl. What the guys have out there?
I know, but that's just what I thought. You're a good word.
What you and Shawna do is amazing.